Welcome to our March 9th, uh, school board work session. Sarah, if you have a, do the roll please.
Aldrich.
Here.
Rofe.
Here.
Christensen.
Present.
McKeon, Tomzik, Tucker.
Here.
And Peterson.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a very full agenda tonight. Are there any, after reviewing the agenda, are there any changes, suggestions that need to be considered before we approve the agenda? If not, we do motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion. Second.
Paul and Joe second. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we will have our public comment portion of our meeting. If there are citizens, community members that would like to address the board at this time, now would be the opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we will move on to item five in our business section. Consideration to approve the annual achievement and integration plan. Nancy and Ray, ask you to come up.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
So I'm just gonna get us started in terms of, is it okay if I just grab?
Okay.
Too bad.
And hit it. Showing up, there it is. Well, it's the work session.
Okay.
Alright, so Ray and I are here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the A&amp;I program and our achievement integration program. So, we are in the process of doing what's called a reauthorization of the A&amp;I program. So every three years, you have to build a new plan and submit with that an annual budget. And then an annual budget is submitted every year. And there's compliance reports and things like that that go with that. And so, that report and application is due on March 15th. And so, we wanted to just kind of walk you through that plan a little bit tonight, see any questions that you might have. And then we're seeking approval of submitting that plan from the board. And so, we're gonna start with Ray just talking a little bit about what is the purpose of the achievement integration program? And we'll kind of go through each of our goals and the budget and that kind of thing.
So there's four areas that we'll be looking at in the plan. Number one is to pursue racial and economic integration. But we know everything's about teaching and learning. And most of our programs are designed to either eradicate or lessen barriers for access, you know, access to core critical thinking and digital learning, literacy and those type of things. Creative imagination, you know, and accelerated growth for all of our kids. Our young scholars and our Avid programs are things that hit in that, uh, to pursue racial and economic integration. We look at our increased student achievement, talking about the gap, right? Create equitable educational opportunities and then reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds in our schools. And this all comes from the state. These all four come from the state. They just added a new one, which is to pursue, I should say to retain, no, I don't wanna say like that. To recruit and retain teachers of color, sorry. To recruit and retain teachers of color. They just added that. As you know, Minnesota and all around the nation, that is an issue that people are trying to get into. So, that's the goals. And that's not the goal, but that's all the things that surround around our program. Now, the goals are next. So the goals that we look at for the next three years are to decrease racial disparities for our black and Hispanic students and enrollment for advanced courses. We're looking at, we looked at our advanced placement courses and we looked at all our demographics. And we've got a disparity there, right? And so, we looked at our programming of what we have and how can we, like, again, we talked about eradicating or lessening those barriers. So there's some things we're doing on our young scholars and our Avid programs to reduce that disparity there. Improve graduation rates for Hispanic students through consistent attendance and passing grades. We looked, we took the Hispanic group, that was our demographic, that was right at the low 60%. So that's to get out, yeah. So that's the group that we're looking at. And again, if you look at our programming, that's, you know, we look at Avid, young scholars, our check and connect program, looking at those attendance rates. The kids that we've had in our, um, our check and connect program that we took from the eighth grade, um, our attendance has jumped through the roof, you know, just now that they have a mentor. They have somebody that checks in and connects with them two to three times a week. So that's been going very well. Improve family engagement district-wide, including the welcome, welcome center. When we get to our work session, we'll probably talk a little bit more about this and, you know, something that came out of the needs assessment with Equity Alliance. You know, just being more welcoming, more inclusive to all in our district and looking at our welcoming center and how we can beef up that support for our families in the district, right? And then last, like I was trying to talk about before, the hiring and retention of teachers of color. Right now, that, you know, we're at, what, .17 teachers of color in the district. We've gotta work, we gotta be more creative, we gotta do some things to get more teachers of color in our district. So those are our goals. They all, yes.
Hey, not to interrupt you, when do you see that the attendance are dropping off for the students? Is it middle school or is it beginning of high school or where is it exactly?
Well, if you, um, around ninth grade.
Okay.
Around ninth grade. Uh, you know, typically in the middle schools, it's hard to, you know, skip out of those classrooms and things like that. It's, it's, so ninth grade is where we really see it. Just 'cause the school's big, right? Resources, uh, you know, yes, we have people in the halls, but it's just, it's a bigger environment for those kids. But we really see it big in the ninth grade. And I would say more so, uh, the end of the first quarter is where you start to really see those kids that are not, that are disengaged in the classroom, start to walk the halls, start to find ways to get out of classes. So, our check and connect program looks at those type of kids that are, kids that come to school every day, but not necessarily in class. So those are the kids that we really work with. And so, we work with our principals in the middle school to find out those kids that might, you know, have red flags, little warning signs that those kids are the kids that you better pay attention to because we feel like these guys will be, or gals, maybe the hall walkers or maybe the kids that just, you know, yeah, they're in class, but they're not doing anything. And now at your high school, those would be the kids that'll walk in the halls and find different things, you know, especially once they start getting cars and stuff like that, so.
So the state defines consistent attendance at 90% or better, that kids are in school 90% better of the time. And so, that's part of what check and connect and some of what Ray is talking about is to try to hit that threshold because we know if they're in class, they're much more highly likely to pass, et cetera. So getting them there is important.
Yeah, great.
What are these red flags that you're talking about for the eighth graders?
When you talk about, like, attendance?
Yes.
Um, everything from, like, yeah, the, uh, behavior referrals, right? Uh, the kid that's frequently going to the bathroom, right? And I would say just the disengagement piece, goofing around in class. You know, and, and I, you know, and I think some of that, and we'll talk about that later as well, is getting our teachers, you know, culturally responsive teaching, right? Getting that professional development. And our kids are engaged in the classroom, you know, this, it's not just about the kid, it's, um, and this is just my deal, I mean, not just my deal, but it's been proven, you know, behavior intervention, you know, there's an academic intervention that needs to happen. It's not all, you know, into the office. You know, if the academics in that classroom is going right, most kids will stay in the class and they'll be engaged. So there's things that you have to do to keep that kid, keep that kid going and keep it engaged. But the red flags, as we talk about, is really just the disengagement.
Right.
Any other questions?
So the things that we fund through our budget is gonna kind of speak to the main things that if you had a chance to look at the budget, you would've seen these programs or positions.
Right. So, all of our, our salaries and benefits for the supervisor, our specialists, our cultural liaisons, our Avid program in seven through 12, our young scholars program, K through six, check and connect. And our check-in, check-out programming is for the elementary, which will be starting in 2020 as well. And then professional development, in which we're gonna really take a jump and really start to really work with our CRT in the district. So that's what, that's what the A&amp;I grant funds. You know, it's teachers, it's students, it's our programming, it's access. And like I said, everything is about eradicating and lessening the barriers for our students.
And then, the next step that we wanted to make sure that you were aware of is that you have an April work session. And at that work session, it's our intention to come back and share with you guys some of the results from the Equity Alliance report. And then talk more in detail regarding the merger of teaching and learning and equity, which as you guys know, we've been working towards. And then discuss some logical next steps from a planning, strategic planning or direction point of view. So, just wanted you to know that this is kind of just one step along the way. And, you know, we have to submit the, uh, the application to MDE, but there's more work to be done. And so, more conversation we'll have with the board at the April work session, so. Now, any final questions?
Um, yeah. So where are the graduation disparities as they currently stand?
So, I think, you know, the one we pointed out because it was interesting, we actually just got the, the state, you know, as we, it was released this week, what the graduation rates for Shakopee as well as for the state. And, you know, the good news for us was, is that we were very comparable to the state in almost all subgroups except for Hispanic. We are slightly below the state average there. It did go up. So, we did revise even our application today from 60% to 63, I think it was about.
Sixty-three.
63.8. And we're gonna try to push that above 73% within our planning three years, just because we think that'll keep us closer to at the state or above where the state will be at that time.
So where are we, do you have the numbers where we're at and where the state's at?
So not, not right with us, but I can tell you that the state for Hispanic, it seems like, and I'm looking at board to kind of confirm, was maybe more like 67% or 68%. And that was the one group that really stood out where we were not at or slightly above the state average for a subgroup or for a certain population. And that was part of the reason we had picked them, is that we were aware that that was our group that had the biggest discrepancy that we needed to address. Well, one thing that we got, we met a lot with Equity Alliance regarding our A&amp;I plan this time around as well as with MDE. And one of the suggestions they made to us is that in the past, maybe our goals were too widespread, like maybe trying to target so many groups that it made it hard to really focus in. And so, they really recommended that we, we not do that too much, but that we really look at where our data leads us in terms of where the greatest need is and to make sure we really hone in and target on that.
Paul, just for reference, I just looked at us, too. State 69.9 for Hispanic students, Shakopee 63.4, so about six and a half points under?
Yep.
You just looked at the same thing?
Okay.
Thanks for letting me do something related to data management.
I just wanna say, trying to pull that from memories of those are.
Alright. Uh, I think, thought I saw something having to do with parents or guardians, are there tools or ways to equip parents to help drive that success or does work to, you know, open?
Yep.
Yep, so one of our big next steps, starting, uh, we'll actually start planning it this spring going into next year, is that we're going to do two things. One is to ensure that there's family engagement nights at every building. We've done some family engagement nights, but it hasn't been consistent at every school. And then, the other thing is we're looking at our options on creating more of what we would call a new family orientation or onboarding process to help our families, especially those who don't speak English or maybe moved to country, to really understand sort of how schools work and how we can work with them and they can work with us to help support their, their kids. So, we're looking at how best to do that. So that's gonna be one of our big pieces that we're gonna be working on as part of the, the general equity work, but also the A&amp;I program, so.
I really like those ideas of trying to connect with those families. I think that's going to be a huge step in the right direction to success for, for most students and families.
Right.
Um, one question that I had, uh, in regards to, you're talking about engagement and trying to get students more engaged. Do you think that as they enter ninth grade and maybe later middle school, when there's more person-wide learning, um, like at the academy model, that there will be, you'll see the numbers get better from a success standpoint? Because there's more, um, smaller group type of opportunities for their students where they're not necessarily lost in a big school where they, you know, teachers have more visibility to maybe somebody that's struggling? I can see that this could totally benefit from that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, was part of the rationale for making the change is that the research on small learning communities, which is what academies are, show that basically it really helps kids feel more of a sense of belonging, um, more consistent teachers rather than just seeing them once and never again. I think our teachers, our high school teachers would say that they're talking about kids in ways they were never before because of the academy model and because of the academy team meetings. So there's a lot more discussion, which we agree with, that we've seen that change. Anecdotally, you know, we're in the early stages still on the high school to know, but I think they are feeling like they are more in touch with what's happening with kids. I think that's what I've heard high school teachers say.
Yes, and I, obviously I hear a lot from our kids and our equity specialists, whereas our liaisons, um, it's the classes that I, that we see kids tend to move out of is typically your, especially for our newcomers, is, you know, it's the English classes, right? Those are the classes that we see kids coming out of math, but it's not the, their actual, the electives that they love, the academies that they're getting into and the electives that they really love, 'cause it's a lot of hands-on. They're in there, you know, it's, it's some of the core classes that, at least that I see, when kids are skipping and you go through their grades and your check and connect, you know, it's, it's those core classes that you go, hey, you know, these are the ones. But those are the ones that, you know, that they're just finding like, alright, I've got to my limit. I know this amount, I know this much, this is all I need. I can't, I don't wanna go any further in math. And so, we have to find ways to make those, that, you know, relating to what they're gonna be doing in the future, you know, and find different avenues for these kids and make them say, you know what, I didn't think of it that way. Alright, you know, that's, I mean, that's the job, right? So.
Yeah, great. Any other questions for Ray or Nancy?
So then I would ask Chris if you, I think you need to vote if I remember right. I'm looking at Sarah, too.
Yes, please.
So, N plus sign. Don't leave without that.
So we, uh, need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And, Joe? Any further discussion?
Thank you very hard, Chris.
Absolutely.
Very much looking forward to future meetings and learning more about the integration and the alliance, what, what work's been done there, what we can learn from that, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Seeing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Moving on to item 5.2, and we'll ask Bill and I to come up and talk to us a little bit about the budget presentation and budget information for upcoming years.
Sarah, will you put that, that background information on first?
Good.
You want me to take it off mic and then?
Sure, then I can jump in and do this and, yeah.
Perfect.
It's not how we did it at rehearsal, but.
Oh, that's fine, we can add that. Uh, good evening, thank you for the opportunity to present, uh, a couple of budget items tonight. First, the first item that I'll be talking about is really, uh, our assumptions and summary related to next year's budget. So we're talking about fiscal year 2021, which is the 2020-2021 school year. So that's really the first item that I'll be talking about. Uh, the second item is more of a long-term financial forecast, so really looking at what we call the out-years, fiscal '22 through '25. So that's kind of the, the second item, uh, of, of the forecast. There, there is gonna be some repeat summary density, especially as it relates to fiscal '21 in the out-years presentation, so you have to kind of forgive me for that. But I think in this capacity, review is never a bad thing. So, uh, we'll look at that, but before we do, maybe Dr. Edm, if you'd like to take it off?
Yeah, we just thought, uh, we talked about doing this and wanted to give some background information in terms of the financial outlook and, uh, what, what's going to be shared and then you've got a pack. And really, you know, we've got a presentation, we put things together, uh, started doing those at our school buildings last week. What you're getting is, you know, there's a couple slides from that presentation, but going back another step to the actual source documents, many of which come from the Association of Metro School Districts. But wanted to just, you know, talk about a couple things, I won't read through this, it's there, but, uh, you know, one thing I would, I would wanna say, you know, in looking at stuff and when we compare it and we'll, you know, we'll see the audit report and some of that. Shakopee School District is providing great value for money. We, we really truly are. And I don't, it doesn't matter even the, the form of the, you know, the financial analysis, uh, but when you look at, we've got high-quality educational services and we're spending less, often much less, uh, than other comparable suburban school districts. And so, I don't wanna lose sight of that. We're gonna do some framing of our financial outlook. We're gonna talk about some very real challenges, uh, but I wanna frame that from, I think there's a lot of great things going on in our school district today, yesterday, tomorrow, and, and so, I don't wanna lose sight of that. I also don't wanna lose sight of some of the financial realities that, that contribute to this. And again, this isn't, you know, this is just, I want us to develop an understanding of the situation because I think the better our understanding is of the challenge, the better solutions that, that we can come up with as an organization and move forward and keep doing as many great things as possible for our students, so. Revenue realities, you'll, you'll, you know, if you've listened to me, uh, over the last few weeks and I've shared some of this in, uh, you know, my weekly communication with the board and, uh, our state, if you go back to 2003, is unfun, you know, underfunded, uh, public school districts in comparison to simply the rate of inflation. And all of us live in a world where inflation is real. Uh, if you go back to 2003, uh, that adds up, you know, to approximately $5.7 million less in funding that we receive in, in a typical year like this school year and every year than we would if the rate of, you know, if the state were funding our per pupil formula equal to the rate of inflation. That's a significant amount of money on an annual basis. It makes, makes our job of providing services incredibly challenging. And if we continue on, we also, the next paragraph is very, and, sorry, I should, um, you know, well, we'll get to those slides and I'll talk about them later. One thing I wanna be really, really clear about, programming like special education and our programming for our English learners, our EL programs, they are incredibly, incredibly important, incredibly meaningful, incredibly well-done. And what I'm going to say, I, I believe in those programs. What I'm about to say is about how they're funded and not the programs themselves, and I wanna be incredibly clear about that. Uh, but if we look at, you know, the data, we have what's called a cross-subsidy in both special education and, and the services we provide to our EL or English learner students. That cross-subsidy, what that means is the state set these, or the state and the federal government put these programs in place. And again, I think great programs. And then they've not met their funding responsibilities. The federal government said they would fund 40% of special education costs. I believe off the top of my head right now, that's at about 8%. Uh, I think the most they've ever done is in the 14% to 16% range or something like that. That is a serious, serious funding issue. Because we believe in the programs, but we're not getting the funding that should go along with that. And so, we take money from what we call the general fund to the tune of $9 million a year to fund programs like special education and our EL program. And again, not complaining at all about the programs, they're great, but it's the funding that hasn't kept up with the mandate. This is a great example of a severely underfunded government, or government mandate, uh, in terms of special education. Bill's gonna talk about our, our fiscal, their school year 2021, our fiscal year '21 budget, um, and I won't, you know, I won't talk about that now. He's gonna talk about the '21-'22 budget, so if we scroll down a little further. Uh, I do wanna make one more point and then we'll look at the slides. Uh, the challenges we're facing, it's not just a Shakopee thing. Uh, across the metro area, the, the districts that belong to the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, their shortfalls for the '20-'21 school year, their projected budget shortfalls, $93.6 million. Schools in our area facing similar, you know, facing projected budget shortfalls, uh, you know, similar to what we are. Bloomington, it's, they're facing a budget shortfall of $4.2 million. Burnsville, Eden Savage, $7.5 million. Eastern Carver County, $7.2, and, and you can read the rest on that list. But just, you know, really wanted to make that point that it's, it's not just a Shakopee thing. This is a statewide funding issue and it's a challenge and it's something that, that I believe, if we truly believe in public education, and I believe in public education with every, every fiber of my being, that we need to fund it adequately. And our state has let us down, uh, and we're seeing that. And we're seeing it across the state, we're definitely seeing it in the metro, so. Uh, if you would scroll to the first slide, please, and.
Yep.
Now, we'll test you here.
Right.
At our audit, uh, this, this looks very similar. This comes from our audit and I don't know if those numbers will show up there, uh, and then I also don't know if my eyes, even with the reading glasses, can get that, I think I can. Uh, revenue per student, and this comes from, from our, our auditors. Uh, you have a metro average, the revenue per student, the left side of that graph, $13,170 per student. State average, $12,691 per student. Shakopee, uh, $11,355 per student. And then, as you would expect, the expenses would be similar, and they are. We're spending less, you know, if you look at the state average per student, about $1,300 per pupil less than school districts across the state. And again, that goes back to that first statement, we're doing a great job. We're providing great services and great value for the money, um, and that's one way to show that. And Sarah, if you could continue, please. This goes back to, you know, one of the first things I talked about, this is a graph put out by AMSD that just shows, the red line is if the per pupil funding, which is our basic funding formula, the allowance that we get per student. And the red line is inflation adjusted, uh, the green line is what we've actually received. And so, you can see the, the gap between those two things. Yeah, for the next one. We're gonna test you here, spinning stuff. These are the special education cross subsidies. And if you scroll down, there's a highlighted line where it says Shakopee, um, and you'll see, and this is from 2018, you know, and again, AMSD's doing really good financial analysis. They're taking, you know, the audited end-of-year reports that come from the Minnesota Department of Ed. That cross subsidy, that amount in our school year, you know, fiscal year 2018 or school year 2017, a little over $7.5 million that went from our general fund to pay for those services. And again, those services are incredibly important. And then the next slide, I believe, is the, a similar EL cross subsidy, Shakopee's, uh, you go over to the red on the far right there. And again, we're, we're testing my vision, but I'll look here, uh, you know, almost 1.4 million, same story, so if you continue. Yeah. One of the pieces of, of funding, uh, and just something, you know, point out is voter-approved operating levies. Uh, Shakopee does not have a voter-approved operating levy. You know, a lot of the districts that were even still making the cuts, and I think that's even. even, when you look at that, they're receiving more revenue per pupil than we are, they're still cutting significant amounts from their budget. And then the final slide, I think is just, I kind of summarized this slide towards the beginning, but this is, you know, the districts across the metro, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and their projected budget cuts for the 2021 school year. And again, not to, and I do, I notice I have a little bit of emotion in my voice as I talk about that, but again, it comes back to, well, I would argue, you shouldn't be in my job if you don't have some emotion in your voice about serving kids and doing great things for kids and believe in that mission, but, you know, just wanted to sort of give some background, kind of set the table, a little bit of, kind of big-picture pieces, and like I said, going more to the source documents rather than our slides in the presentation we've been sharing, and just kind of put that on the record, and know that when Bill's talking about budgeting, he's been working, you know, he's been working very hard, we've been working very hard, he's got a great budgeting process, and then he'll share some information that we're going to come back and talk about, we've got a challenge, and I know he's going to talk about, really tonight, his message is defining the challenge, he'll show you a timeline over the next few board meetings, you know, from now through June 22nd, we're going to talk about, there are ways to solve those challenges. If you have a budget shortfall, there's three ways: you cut expenses, you increase revenue, or you do a combination of cutting expenses and raising revenue. And we'll work through that, and we'll begin, you know, we're going to, just like we've done with the other things, you know, looking at the move potentially from CFC to Pearson, we're going to engage in a thoughtful, deep learning discussion, and at the end of the day, we're going to do what we believe is best for our school district and for the students in our community, so.
If I can...
Yeah, you can.
...a question here. The 2018 special education cross subsidies, now is that state money coming in, or is that what we're spending?
That is the shortfall, the $7.5 million is the shortfall between the revenue we get to pay for special education services, provided by either the federal government or the state government, that we then take out of our general fund to pay for those special education services.
And that becomes $8.30 per student, if I heard that now.
Yep, 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 exactly, yep. No, thank you for asking that.
Any other questions before we let Bill proceed?
One quick one, on the projected budget shortfall, is this mostly due to decreased amount of students, or is it because of spending increases, or is it just a combination of both? Is it more one or the other?
I think, you know, they've got, I think, either 40 or 41 districts on that list, and there's going to be 40 or 41 unique stories. Some of the districts, you know, across the Minnesota, enrollment's growing, I think a lot of those are districts that have, you know, decent enrollment growth, some do not. You know, you'll see, I mean, there's one district down there that has declining enrollment, just past an operating levy to get to the maximum amount of that, they're in the process of closing three school buildings, and on top of that are going to cut $7.5 million for that 2021 school year. But there are other districts that are growing. I think, you know, it's a variety of factors, it's the, you know, we look at the rate of inflation, we look at funding, and they, and, you know, the funding doesn't keep up with that, and it's, you know, there are challenges. We look at, it's everything from tight labor markets, too. I said it on a presentation not too long ago, I want to say the number of, you know, unemployed persons in Scott County is like 2,700, I mean, they've got it, it's so low, you know, and I don't remember what the percentage is, but it was like 2.4% or something. But we compete for labor, as do other school districts in a very competitive market, and, you know, and so it's, you know, we're a service industry, as you know, and roughly about 80% of what we spend is providing services, we spend on people, and, yeah, your question, it's a very, very complex question, each of the 41 has its own story. I think there's, you know, there's different combinations that get you to the place, you know, where you're at, and having to, you know, face that shortfall, and, and I think, and again, I, you know, I'd go back to, I think you want to look at all the options, too, and I mentioned that, it's, you know, we want to look at, you know, the expense side, we want to look at the revenue side, we want to look at a combination of those, because we really, you know, we want to do the best we can to provide a consistent set of services over time, so. So my answer, though, that was a long way of me saying I don't know, and there's a lot of, everyone has their own stories, so, I apologize.
All right, well, let's proceed with, we sure will have more questions once you get into the other information.
Okay, great. So, included in your board pack, and up on the screen as well, you'll see the first two items that we're going to speak to, the Word document, which is really our budget assumptions for next year. So the first document, we're just looking at next year's budget, so fiscal '21, and just speaking for the general fund right now. So, later on this spring, we'll start looking at the other governmental funds, Food Service Fund, Community Education Fund, Dad's Service Fund, but right now, we're just looking at the general fund, and just speaking in general terms, right? So, building the budget is nothing more than populating a document after we have determined some assumptions centering on revenue expenditures and enrollment, because as we all know, enrollment really drives the revenue side of the budget. So, first, looking at the revenue summary, and I should speak to the why, why are you seeing this document tonight on March 9th? This is an item, in a list of a number of items that will lead us to June 22nd, which is when you'll see a formal recommendation for approval of the fiscal '21 budget, right? We're required by statute, the board's required by statute to approve the budget by the end of the fiscal year, and this is just kind of kicking that off to get to June 22nd, when you'll see a recommendation.
And one term that always kind of, I don't know, sounds funny, we've always, I think in the past, usually, we're approving the preliminary budget. Bill's much more comfortable, and I think it makes more sense, he's going to talk about approving the budget, but it's in the past what had been called preliminary budget, and that always confused people, you had a preliminary budget, and then you had a revised budget, but you never had just a budget budget, so, this is really the budget, and then there'd be a revised budget, so just in case anybody just hung up on some of that terminology.
So, under the general fund, you'll see our general fund, our revenue is estimated for next year at $99.3 million, and that is made up of the following components that we'll go over here. So as we all know, state basic general education aid is the basic aid for the education system, and that is estimated next year at $59.4 million. As we all know, we have a, or we are scheduled to receive a 2% increase in the second year next year, which would bring the basic formula allowance to $6,567 per adjusted pupil unit, an increase of $129 over the current year, 1920. And you can see at the bottom, school year formula allowance, and then the formula change, the last three bienniums at 2%, but when we look at the history, as mentioned in Dr. Edmond's presentation, much lower than that, as you recall, we did receive those three straight years of zero between 2009 and 2012, and frankly, school districts are still trying to recover from that, as you've seen in the chart from AMSD. Important to note, just an item that people tend to get tripped up on, and it would make sense that people do, the funding formula, formula allowance for next year is $6,567 per pupil unit, in Dr. Edmond's presentation, he referenced that the revenue that we collect is north of $11,000, I think $11,355 per student. The difference between the state aid funding formula and the revenue we collect per student is not funded by a tax levy, or funded by the federal government, or local fees, things of that nature, it's funded by other categorical aid, which we'll get into here. So just an important item of note as we move forward. So, our other sources of general education aid revenue total, $7.7 million, and are made up of the below, other general education aid, as you can see, compensatory revenue is scheduled to be $2,916,000, and then our LEP, Limited English Program, estimated at $717,000, the two of those known as basic skills revenue for next year. And so that's, in addition to the formula allowance paid on the state aid side, as you can see, there are a few items there that have an asterisk next to them, they have a corresponding levy component. So for example, operating capital, we are estimating $1.381 million in operating capital aid for next year, but it has an asterisk because it also does have operating capital levy dollar component to it as well. Flipping to the next page, you'll see revenue from state-supported programs totals $13,946,000, the vast majority in this category is in regular special education. So you can see regular special education accounts for $10,605,000, or roughly 76% of this category of other categorical type aid. And so, the state aid funding formula, the $59 million, plus the other categorical aid, and this area totals 80% of the revenue we receive in the general fund, right? So the state basic education aid plus the categorical aid is 80% of the revenue we receive.
Okay. Yeah, a quick question on that, the categorical aid, what percentage, on average, has that come up over the last five years? Approximately?
Yeah, it's, much of it's paid based off of, per, in amount...
Students?
Yeah, the amount, an amount per student, thank you, the formula-driven, that's what that, what this gave me. And so it's, it can vary based off of our enrollment, I would have to go back and look at each fiscal year, but it's formula-driven.
That'd be interesting to know how much per student for the last few years, just to get some sort of an idea going forward.
I will include that in the weekly summary. Moving to property taxes on the second page, you can see that the 19 payable 20 levy certification amount in the general fund is $13.73 million, accounting for approximately 13.8% of our total general fund revenue. And as we all know, this really stems three years, right? This is the 19 payable 2020, it's district data from 2019, property taxes payable in calendar year 2020, which we're currently in, and then district revenue for next year, fiscal year 2021, school year 2020-2021. The other item of note is the levy amount was flat in the general fund, 18 payable 19 to 19 payable 20, so the revenue that you see here was roughly the same amount as you saw last year. And then finally, federal sources and local tuition fees and admissions, much smaller percentages here, about $2.5 million in federal revenue, made up largely of title programs and special education entitlement for next year, and then our local tuition fees and admissions accounts for about $1.95 million, things like activity fees, gate receipts, interest earnings, things of that nature, accounts for just less than $2 million.
Bill, before you move on, from the federal standpoint, the 2.5 for next school year, is that based on what we received in this previous year, or how did you calculate that?
Those are estimates on title, I don't want to, programming, and then also our estimate on federal special ed for next year, that we receive, just estimates?
I'm just curious, because I know that there's discussion at the federal level of cutting this program, I think I heard 8%, so, I don't know if that's 100% accurate, but I either read it or heard it somewhere that they're looking to cut special ed by 8%, so I'm just throwing that out there, that that, we may need to take that into consideration, if that would actually pass. I don't know if that would get next school year, or if that's the following year, how that money triples down, but...
Okay. Yeah, and admittedly, our revenue in the federal area is largely based on history and projections, so.
So, the state aid coming in, that disparity, has that been just growing year by year by year, or...
Sorry, say that.
The state aid that we get, that and our actual cost, is that disparity been growing year by year by year, or is it just, it's one year it just showed up and hasn't changed?
It depends on two main variables, both the amount in new money from the state, and then the rate of inflation. So, next year, we're getting 2% new money from the state, or scheduled to receive 2%. And so, depending on the rate of inflation, that can adjust that. Per pupil figure, that's $637 per student that Dr. Edmond referenced, up or down based off of that rate of inflation. Now, if we look at that AMSD chart, during those three straight years of zero, from like 2009 to 12, that's when that graph really, the discrepancy between aid, state aid, and inflation really grew, was during those three, those three years.
Okay.
Am I answering your question?
Yeah, you are, I'm just kind of thinking all out here, just to get found a good place for that four billion dollar deficit or surplus to normalize, what do I know?
Moving to enrollment, we are projecting enrollment next year for average daily membership, think of average daily membership as students of 8,200, and that's early childhood through grade 12. You can see the breakout below, important to understand the distinction between ADM, which calculates membership time, and weighted average daily membership, or adjusted pupil units, which is included on the right side. So you can see the pupil unit weighting for grade six through, or excuse me, seven through 12 is a 1.2 ADM, which is why our 8,200 ADM projection for next year equals 9,047 adjusted pupil units, right? And so our state formula aid is based off of our 9,047 adjusted pupil units. And then finally, you can see our ADM enrollment history and projections, certainly we have pockets of growth throughout our district, but overall, at least looking back to the 2016-17 school year, we have not seen major growth district-wide, and so that, that's in part based off of our projection of 8,200 next year, we're slightly below our current year projection of 8,281, and just assuming 8,200 moving forward. And then lastly, on the expenditure side, really what we have here is just a general fund expenditure budget estimated at $101,843,000 for next year. Salary wages and employee benefits, as we all know, school districts are people-intensive organizations, are estimated at $60.8 million and $20.23 million respectively, that accounts for 79.6, I mean around 80, just for ease of conversation, 80% of our general fund expenditure budget is spent on people, salary, wages, and employee benefits. So, 80% is a common percentage, both on the revenue and expenditure side, just for ease of reference, you'll recall that 80% of the revenue that we collect in the general fund comes from the state, 80% of what we spend on the expenditure side is spent on salary, wages, and employee benefits. So 80%, as we continue the conversation moving forward, is going to be an important percentage to remember. Other district staffing assumptions, staffing variations due to enrollment are generally required to fit within the ratios provided below, you can see the student-to-teacher targeted ratios in the elementary, middle school, and high school for next year, and then finally, our non-staff expenditures are estimated to be about 20.4%, so the other side of the 79.6. Significant expenditures in this area include transportation, so we contract out for our transportation services, that accounts for $5.18 million, building utilities, and then capital and equipment in the other areas as well. So that's sort of a high-level summary of the general fund as it relates to fiscal '21, and obviously, this will be a common topic. If we go to the last page, you'll see our projections for next year, our draft budget for fiscal '21, our revenue total of $99.3 million, our expenditure total of $101.8 million, and then as seen on Dr. Edmond's presentation as well, a general fund deficit projection of $2.542 million for next year. Important to note, as Dave did earlier today, when we were talking, the current year revised budget does have a surplus of $1.39 million, however, as we know, $1.1 million roughly of that $1.39 million is due to the land sale, right? So when we look at the decrease from $1.39 million down to a deficit of $2.5 million, that's rather extreme, but really, $1.1 million is the land sale in the current year, so important item of note as well. So important item of note as well. The second item I'll, I'll move on to here is the PowerPoint, which is our out-year projection. And as I mentioned before, uh, there is gonna be some repeat or redundancy, uh, as it relates to fiscal 21, the information we just went over, but I think it's important to factor that in when we're looking at an out-years projection. Uh, so looking at our budget process, uh, it's helpful when we're looking at some longer-term projections to start by reviewing what we already know. Um, and so as we all know, our fiscal year is from July to June. As we all know, we have a four-step continuous budget process, and each step is open to, uh, public inspection and comment. Our first step is our property tax levy. Uh, the 2019 pay 20 levy was certified by the board during their truth and taxation hearing on December 9th, and that serves as levy revenue for next fiscal year, fiscal 21. The second step is the, the budget now, rather than the preliminary or the adopted budget, the budget, uh, for all funds, and you'll see a recommendation, uh, from administration on June 22nd to approve the budget. And then we have the revised budget, which, uh, takes into consideration items that may not be known, uh, either legislative items, or contractual obligations, or other variances in enrollment, for example, that are not known during the, uh, in that case, I have to use the preliminary budget process. And then finally, our annual financial report and audit usually takes place in, uh, October, uh, November, or December, after the, uh, after the end of the fiscal year. Okay, so, uh, moving to assumptions, how this document reads is really the assumptions for fiscal 21, and then the budget projection for fiscal 21, and then the assumptions for the out-years 22 through 25, and then the budget projections for the same. And so we've reviewed this slide already, I don't need to go over it in great detail. Uh, the only important things to note are, we are assuming 2% increase in revenue from the legislature for next year, flat enrollment, and then you can see our, uh, assumptions as it relates to, uh, salary, wages, and employee benefits for next year. The next slide you have already seen, uh, on, on the previous document, that's just the budget deficit of 2.54 million for next year, wanted to include it in this PowerPoint as well, just so, uh, it's easy to make the connection between fiscal 21 and the out-years as well. And then the next slide is, uh, a look at our fund balance impact, and so, uh, you can see that our school board has Fund Balance Policy 714, that states that we will strive to maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance between 8 and 12%, and that's that gray shaded area. Um, and you can see that there's, uh, we had sort of a critical point in fiscal 17 in the $600,000 range with regard to our, our unassigned fund balance. We have been, uh, slowly building that up, which is a great thing, such that the projected fund balance as of June 30, 2020, will be in the neighborhood of 3.6 million. Um, and then as you can see, for next year, we are, uh, projecting or estimating that fund balance to take a hit by that $2.5 million deficit that we projected earlier, right? So that's sort of the reconciliation between the budget document and this fund balance is going from 3.6 down to 1.9. And then finally, looking at the out-years and our assumptions on the out-years. So, uh, I am assume, we are assuming level enrollment, um, for fiscal, uh, 22 through 25, right? Uh, when we look at our history, at least going back to 1617, we've been relatively flat as it relates to our enrollment, so it would, uh, make sense to assume level enrollment here during the out-years. Uh, and then we have assumed 1.25% increase in state funding. Uh, we know that we are scheduled to receive 2% next year, and we are receiving 2% this year. Uh, however, um, not sure what will happen with the legislature, and that's what determines the state aid funding, and so in order to be conservative in this area, we are estimating 1.25% uh, additional state aid revenue in fiscal 22 through 25. And then finally, salary, wages, and employee benefits and non-wage items, which I probably could have just consolidated that to say all expenditure items in the general fund, assuming 2% increase each year, fiscal 22 through 25. The next two slides, um, have quite a bit on them, but just as a way of reviewing the sheet, uh, you can see our adjusted pupil units and our state aid funding formula, we've already gone over that, and you can see that our level enrollment at 9,047 adjusted pupil units, and that state aid funding formula increasing by 2% in fiscal 21, and then 1 and 1/4 thereafter. Uh, that generates our general fund revenue and general fund expenditures, and the percentage change in both the revenue and the expenditure categories. Uh, fiscal 21, we've talked about the spending variance, the deficit projection of 2.5 million, and the fund balance impact that that has. And then Dr. Redman mentioned in, in his presentation, uh, in fiscal 22, in the event that we did nothing, right? So, uh, we reference those three options, uh, looking at increases in revenue, decreases in expenditures, or a combination of the both, in the event that we did nothing, which we're not going to do. Um, so you can see that the spending variance for fiscal 22, and then the unassigned fund balance impact, and then carrying on. Now, just an important item of note, um, whenever school districts in the state of Minnesota present five-year forecasts, they always look pretty bleak. Um, and the reason why is just that underfunding at the state level, right? So whenever the vast majority of your revenue in the general fund comes from the state, uh, and school districts are underfunded, your five-year projections are gonna look fairly bleak, and certainly we are no different.
Bill, quick question, the 1.25%, was that for the categorical aid also, not just the per student? Okay, just wanna make sure that you're doing it for both.
Good question. And so just as an illustration, again, um, tonight is, is reviewing the financial challenge, certainly not determining any solutions, recommending any solutions, just increasing awareness and understanding of the financial challenge as it relates to our long-term forecast. Um, I thought, we thought it would be helpful to look at, uh, showing the impact of a $6 million expenditure and reductions for fiscal 22. And so that's what the next slide shows. Uh, you can see that fiscal 21 is the same, uh, but in the event that we made budget adjustments in the $6 million range for fiscal 22, uh, you can see that that $4.9 million deficit forecast becomes a surplus, just over a million, and then in fiscal 23, we're relatively flat, a slight deficit of 130,000, and then it starts to slide off again, again reflecting the underfunding at the state level. So, at the, at the next, if we wanna go to the next page, and I probably should have started with this, the timeline and next steps. Uh, tonight, again, is all about understanding the challenge, uh, during the next meeting is about under, unpacking some of the options. So, uh, levy options, both the dollar amount per pupil unit, and then the corresponding taxpayer impact, looking at some options and scenarios to address that, and then also fiscal 22 budget adjustments, digging into, uh, an overview of an illustration on that $6 million scenario as well. Uh, that's quite a heavy lift for one board meeting, so we do have that on the agenda for April 13th as well, uh, just under the umbrella of options and scenarios moving forward. Uh, April 25th, we need to bring in the other funds for fiscal 21. So we'll bring in the Food Service Fund, Community Education Fund, Debt Service Fund, we'll look at an all-funds review, and then recap our financial outlook. Um, some good news here, on May 18th, uh, we will have a CFAC, Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, report to the School Board Finance Committee. Uh, the CFAC group met last Tuesday, they're scheduled to meet again on May 5th, uh, and uh, that group is looking forward, or a member, uh, of that group is looking forward to presenting to School Board Finance on May 18th regarding their findings during their first two meetings. So I think that'll be helpful to the process. Uh, we will wrap everything up and bring it as a draft budget, all funds, on June 8th, and then finally, for formal recommendation, on June 22nd. So with all of that said, that's sort of a, a summary of next year's budget forecast, and then the out-years as well. So, quite a few assumptions going into the out-year, but just helpful in providing a more long-term illustration.
So, I have a few questions, um, or actually not questions, but more comments. Um, I mean, I think this information is, is awesome, so thank you for all the time, because I know you put a lot of time and effort into gathering all this information for tonight. Um, but I wanna make sure that, we often use the word clarity, that, um, we have been, as a school district, um, what I would consider to be coming out of some challenging times and being stewards of the money that we've received. But I think over the last three years, including this current school year, we have been underbudgeted, that we have not overspent on anything, uh, to help build that reserve back up again. So I just wanna make that point of clarity, that we have been going down the right path. It may not be as fast as what maybe some people want it to be, but I think as a community member, before serving on the school board, you know that's gonna take a long time, you don't just save a million dollars overnight. Takes a lot of work, and there are a lot of challenges that are involved with it. One of the things that... I'll come back, but if someone else is applying...
Yeah, just, uh, kind of to piggyback onto that, um, with a lot of, uh, colorful phone calls I've received this weekend, um, yeah, people expected the budget, the fund balance to be higher than what it is now, but, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day either.
It's a lot easier to spend money than it is to save money. Ask everybody in the household, "What's your bet?"
And I think that, the, you know, the deficit, I think the perception of when people heard that we're gonna have a deficit, that we were on money and we were going to be $2.5 billion in the hole, which really isn't true. We are dipping into our reserves for the reason that we need to pay our teachers, we need to keep our teachers, we know that we have a pay gap, and I think that that was an effort, um, and a decision by the board to do, uh, recently, uh, because we value the teachers that we have in our district. And so I, I, I'm fully supportive of doing that, um, but I know that we still have a long ways to go to narrow the gap, um, so...
Well, that, you know, if, say, we weren't able to come to this deal that we made with the teachers, which I appreciate their flexibility on, you know, what would the cost have been hiring substitutes for a strike and dealing with all that mess? You know, just putting that out there for people to have the food for thought.
Plus the reduction of 70, uh, units, students, is almost $800,000. If we would have stayed even, the 2.5 would have been 1.7, which is still a deficit, but it's not as bad. So that's almost a third of what the deficit is, is because our student population is decreasing.
Well, it's something we talked about too, at the, uh, School Board Conference, that if you get a 2% increase in revenue from the state, but that's only 80% of your revenue, it translates to 1.6%. So it's not, you don't feel the full benefit of, of the two. I think that, that's important in terms of some of the calculations having to do with your income.
So, as far as the projections go for next year, I know that you're projecting to have fewer students...
Yes.
Instead of a flat. Is that just based on what trends we are seeing, or do we have any sort of data that would tell us that potentially we're gonna see a smaller number?
We do, and I'm looking at Dave, and we've spent a lot of time, and, and Bill, and that's, you know, it sounds simple, you know, how many students? The, the challenge is really in predicting how many kindergarteners are gonna come in. And we've had a trend where the number coming into kindergarten is smaller than the number graduating. And that, you know, and some of that is kinda the, you know, the last recession we had, people kinda tied, you know, we've got fairly, you know, when you look at our smallest class sizes, and I'm looking at Dave to correct me, they're kinda fifth grade down through kindergarten now, I think. And at some point, I believe that will change. Trying to predict that is, is one of the most challenging things school districts do. Uh, we don't, you know, we're, we're trying to, we don't necessarily have access to know where every four-year-old in the district is, we do an incredible job of trying to find them and, uh, bringing them into the system, uh, and we use all kinds of metrics to try to calculate and predict and do things, and, you know, the indicators right now, we're, we're expecting, again, it's that what we're replacing kinda coming into the system is smaller than what's going out. And I think at some point, that, that is very likely to change. Uh, you know, we're seeing, you know, some destruction in this, you know, kinda the south and west side of the district. But again, you know, what age, you know, what age will the kids be that move in there in some of those instances? And so we are looking at all those factors, we spend a lot of time working, you know, cooperatively with the city, uh, and as you know, we're, we're starting to look at, uh, looking at different models to update our enrollment projections, they're kinda nearing the end of their useful lives, and we did some of that work, I'm looking at Tim with that, uh, task force, you know, examining, you know, whether or not to, you know, what to do with Pearson and some of those things. Uh, it's, uh, you know, we're, we're doing, we're, we're doing a lot of work on enrollment projections, but, you know, our indicators, you know, looks like it'll be a, kind of a similar-sized kindergarten to what we've had, which is smaller than what's exiting the, the high school.
And I guess that's a good way to think about it, because I hadn't thought of it that way, with all the class sizes, the big classes are getting ready to graduate, they're at the high school. And so you don't have that same number coming in, so I guess I never thought of it that way, but...
I, I've got a kid in one of the classes, so I...
I do too.
So it is something to get used to then, and I mean, it is, it is a very simple way to think about it. There's about 590 kids leaving, there's about 520-some projected for kindergarten, that's, that's the difference. And so you can, you can kinda do that roll up each year, see what the 11, you know what, and you'll be able to get some idea. But maybe we get surprised by a kindergarten class as we get into spring and summer, either way.
Yeah.
It's very hard.
What is the class size of seniors right now?
As of...
District approximate?
600.
600. So, potentially, in the next couple of years after that, after the current senior class graduates, we can even see a bigger drop...
Good.
Because my son's class, I think, is 742.
Which grade, what grade is he in?
Last number I heard was 742, so...
Okay, yeah, last week it was 732, so we have 732.
Those were the ones that were wandering the halls when they did the...
You don't have anything more recent?
No.
That's good.
But still, I mean, so if there's 600 coming in...
Right.
And there's 730 leaving, that's 132, times that by your math, it's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money, yes. And, and we are doing modeling throughout those grades, once they're here, when they matriculate from each grade, you know, what does that look like? And obviously, the, you know, again, another, you know, challenge in predicting is eighth grade and the ninth grade, and, uh, we've looked at historical data and tried to put that together and make good, you know, make solid predictions of that too. But they even vary, you know, I think Dave, you know, saying it was from last week, you know, they vary a little bit from week to week, and they definitely vary, you know, like from October 1st, which is a really important date kinda for our enrollment, to revise budgets and things, till, you know, today, March 9th, so, um, you certainly, I think, are doing good work, but it's, it's an imperfect science at the end of the day, but trying to make sound projections.
And I also know over the last couple of years, that, reject this here, that there was an effort made to reduce some costs, they may not have been big dollar amount for transportation, there was, there were costs and efficiencies that were found, and I know there were a few other areas as well, that there were some efficiencies that helped us save a little bit of money, again, wasn't a large dollar amount, but every little bit adds up, and I know, there's been an effort to do that. So, but it's hard when you, you know, you've got $6, $6 million, um, where you cut $6 million out of your budget that you've already reduced so much, if that, you know, obviously that's one of the options, so...
Yeah, yeah, we talked about this at the Personnel Committee meeting, you know, there could be some salaries rolled back a little bit, but...
Can I just say one thing related to the, let's just use that 70 number for a minute? We do look at that when it comes to, when we do project our staffing as well, we do look at those targets that you saw in Bill's presentation, and use those to match what staff we have to how many kids we have. So it's not like we said we had this many kid, this much staff to teach this many kids, we match our staffing to the number of students we have.
And by level.
Yeah.
And by grade at the elementary, and then at the middle and the high school.
And by school, too, so, so, yes, it's all ratio-driven by what those are. So, yes, it's all ratio-driven by what those are, whatever targets we set.
Now, does anyone else that can maybe beneficially maybe add a, I don't know if it's a board retreat or whatever, so we can discuss this in better detail?
Within the next couple of months?
I don't know, I think we've got a good plan in place from a timeline perspective of providing the information. I think at every meeting moving forward between now and June, we will have some sort of information presented and discussion on what our options are and detail around the options and what that all means. I just don't know if another meeting is necessary. I don't know if there's, you, I guess, Mike and Bill, you're putting together the information and working kind of behind the scenes and...
Yeah, and we, you know, we put together a plan, you know, and want to share information at those times. We're certainly available. We're certainly the place to be if you, you know, you want to learn about school finance and budget over the next, you know, couple of months. But certainly, you know, we're available. We're available to, you know, folks in the community as well. You know, we'll explain these things in detail. It's all public record. We'll, you know, talk about, you know, the assumptions and why they were made the way they were, and certainly any pieces of this. And this is something, you know, I think I get to a pretty good level. Bill gets to an incredible level. But we're happy to, you know, to meet with people, talk with people, and, you know, even, you know, sit down, have coffee, do whatever. And if we, you know, if we start to get there, and I think even that's kind of that board direction of, hey, what do you need at these meetings, or we need more time, and we could certainly add, you know, we can certainly extend kind of some of the agenda items too. But again, we want to do whatever it takes, and we may say, hey, we need to, you know, we need to add some time under these meetings or find a way to do that. I'm certainly open to that. We want to go deep. We want to make sure that, you know, we want to make sure that everybody here has a really deep and a really, a good understanding. And also, you know, we also want to make sure that we're communicating in a way that it's complex stuff, but also that we can break it down and have good discussions and meaningful discussions with our staff across the district and everybody in our community as well. And that's challenging, because it's, you know, even I noticed, and I almost said, you know, we talk about adjusted pupil units or pupil units and weighted average daily membership or WOTM. We use two terms interchangeably, and we've got acronyms for everything in education, and so, you know, stop us. You know, I don't even sometimes know when I'm using them, because I've, you know, been in this business for quite a while. It just seems natural to talk about WOTMs and APUs or pupil units, and nobody has any idea what I'm talking about, so what do you mean by that?
At what point will you have, and Keith is here, he's the one that has the answer for this. At what point will you know from a staffing level for next year, early retirements, those sorts of positions of where we're going to be as a district?
So you're preempting my presentation?
Oh.
Just building up interest.
That's right. Stay tuned, this is a commercial.
I may not have the presentation by the time we get done. We have, we have a date that teachers tell us, for example, whether they're coming back or on leave. We have a date for retirements, but sometimes people have considerations throughout, you know, the year, and sometimes people in the summer. And we have some staff members who don't want to declare because they don't want a big show.
Yeah.
You know, they just don't like that kind of a thing. So we won't find that out a lot. I mean, we have retirements, it's not a big number. I think more and more people are working, you know, longer. I think you'll find that in every sector. So we don't have a ton of retirements every year. We'll have some people who will find new positions, and that will change. But we are, we are really starting to move down that path of locking in how many, you know, positions we need based on child count and, you know, how many, how many kids are going to be in each building. And like, as has been discussed here, kindergarten is one of those difficulties. As well as in high school, we have some too, like what are kids, you know, what are kids going to take? Are they going to be moving? Are some of them going to be taking, you know, courses outside of the district? And how does that all play out? So those two ends are a little bit less predictable. So, but we're, we plan on giving assignments mid-October, and that will be pretty firm.
So by that April twenty-seventh meeting, we'll have a better idea?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll know pretty much where we are in staffing, except if new kids move in or if we are off on our prediction of how many students are going to come in. You know, we have one building that has, has had a section difference from year to year. You know, like, there just happens to be this odd anomaly between, you know, grades. It's sort of unpredictable.
And what I remembered my question that I asked, if, this is a big, if the legislature decides to be extremely kind this legislative session and allow one percent additional funds, what would the impact be in our district? And would that be next school year then?
If during this legislation, it would be for the fiscal twenty-one, so next school year, two percent was an additional one hundred and twenty-nine.
Sixty.
Multiplied by nine thousand forty-seven, so sixty-five dollars by nine thousand forty-seven pupil units.
Six hundred thousand? Seven hundred thousand?
Regardless of what path we take, we need to be extremely clear with the community office.
And I think over time, and I'm kind of looking at Ashley, we will be, as we share these documents in public, get things like board meetings and presentations, they will be loaded on our website and, you know, and access to go to the source and stuff. And we've just kind of kicked off some of, you know, the public sharing of this stuff. Now, yeah, everybody wants all the answers immediately, but I think it's, we have an obligation to explain it well too. Otherwise, it's just a lot of numbers and words that may not have a lot of meaning.
And for those watching at home, I encourage, ask questions. If you don't know, ask, because that's the only way that it's going to be communicated correctly, factually, properly. So I encourage anybody to reach out to the district office, reach out to a board member to get your questions corrected. It's really, to me, that's very important. Anything else on this?
I'm just going to say that I've been through a few financial directors in my time, and the information you presented today was very well delivered, so I thank you for that.
Well, yeah, no, good work, we just didn't like what you had to say.
There are no further questions. We are going to let Bill deliver himself from the house.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And we will move to item five point three, which...
Sorry, no, I didn't mean to cut you off.
We're going to talk about five point three, Mike, you want to...
I thought I was going to summarize it very quickly, but I don't have to yet. No, I was going to say, I'm going to summarize it and if you've got questions, ask. There is a diagram, and in fact, sir, you just, yeah, go right to the diagram. There are a couple parcels of land near Jackson Elementary. And again, we sold the parcels just to the west of that recently. And looking to sell Parcels A and B. Parcel A is on the bottom part of this. We have an obligation to keep that as green space. The offer for both parcels, and I think it's a great offer, with, you know, objective sources to verify that, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Parcel A would be purchased by the developers, you know, the apartment building in that space there, and then they would sell it to the city for a dollar or give it to the city. And the city's plan is to turn Parcel A into a dog park. It would be fenced off, kind of the dog park between that and Jackson Elementary. One piece of that at first, you know, and I'll share, you know, at first I thought, oh, a dog park. And then as I thought about it, I went, oh, that's awesome. Because otherwise, all the land around Jackson Elementary kind of becomes a dog park. And they're looking at building a very nice dog park there. Parcel B, which is towards the top of the page, part of that, we've already granted an easement. It's land that sits low, there'd be a very shallow kind of drainage pond in the, you know, kind of the middle part of that, and then flowage out. And that's been part of that development plan. And so it's, in a sense, we trade the obligation to look after and maintain a green space. We come out of it with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the good. The city that owns the dog park part of that is theirs to maintain and upkeep and take care of, and it remains green space. It's not going to, you know, change it to something else. And the other part is just kind of part of, it's kind of really in addition to that easement, the development that we are getting in. So from my vantage point, this is a very positive deal for the city, and I feel like we've done due diligence on it, investigated and explored it. So I would recommend approval of the purchase.
And just for clarity sake, maybe you saw this night at dinner, there will be events.
Yep, that's, I've asked that a few times, and my understanding is that I've been told, yes, there'll be events. And I've learned some fascinating things I didn't know. I'm getting old and stuff, and even, I didn't know if you move into an apartment building, that they actually will do kind of a, some type of genetic marker of the feces of your dog. And so that if there is dog poop left out in the area around the apartment building, somebody will actually test that. And the fine is pretty big. Like, you sign an agreement. I learned all kinds of stuff with this project. But they find you. It's one of the, it's part of the contract for renting in an apartment building nowadays.
You can find for that job.
I don't know, Joe, but I can find out, so, sorry. Anybody out there with me? Has anybody ever heard of that, or?
Yeah.
Okay, wow, I've got to get out more. Sorry.
And then generally, it's about three hundred and fifty dollars for the test. You have to pay for that, and then there's like a ten percent.
Yeah, it's...
That you pay to the...
Yeah, the number I heard was like two hundred and fifty bucks, like, oh my gosh.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
So...
Well, I think this is a problem for the district. I mean, I don't think that if we tried to sell it, I mean, it really has no other use for it.
Is that what you mentioned at the last meeting, you really can't sell it?
We really can't sell it. We have an obligation to maintain it as green space as part of the development of Jackson Elementary in that space, so...
And there's specific language that says it can be converted to the dog park, you know, transition to the city.
Yeah, and the city, when that part is formalized, they will actually give us documentation that we are released from our obligation to maintain it as green space of that area too, so, yeah.
Anything further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Good. All right, Tim, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, who she cares.
Glad we have an over/under on how long this is going to take.
Moving on to item five point four. It's exciting to see Julie sitting back there with her smile on her face. This is, five point four is consideration to approve the movement of programming from Central Family Center to Pearson Building for the twenty twenty-one school year. Mike?
Yeah, I can certainly answer questions. This is one of those times where, you know, in my role as superintendent, where, again, I want to thank the people who are part of our Community Facilities Task Force. They did great work. They presented lots of data, presentations, lots of other people, done research, put a lot of hard work into this. We've shared it enough. We've shared the actual documents that are here. I would simply, you know, make the recommendation to approve moving all of our programming from Central Family to Pearson for the start of the twenty twenty-one school year. And again, it's kind of, I feel like we've talked about these things many, many times. We've done that in detail. Great example of, great example of thoughtful planning, lots of listening, lots of study. And so it's actually kind of nice when you get to this point. And I don't feel like there's really anything new that I need to explain. It's been in here, we've talked about it, but again, happy to answer questions.
Yeah, I think it's been very thoroughly, with the exception of the basketballers, but, you know...
I've got nothing on that.
I just would like us to explore the possibility of accessible playgrounds.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was just at the Fun Girl Playground yesterday and seeing kids with wheelchairs and mobility issues playing and having a great time is pretty important, so...
And that, and, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't the Americans with Disabilities Act kind of trending that way?
All the parks in Chiappa are already ADA compliant, so to have a flat surface, that is not necessarily part of the ADA.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's not a, there's not a requirement per se, but I wholeheartedly agree with you, and that's, yeah, that's part of our planning as we move forward, is what would it take to, you know, we know we need to do a playground remodel, but what would it take to make that an inclusive playground? And certainly, we will explore that, and, you know, and I'm hopeful and optimistic. You're making an investment in that play space, and I think that's certainly a consideration we need to have, so...
Thank you. So I, I just have a couple of things. One, just to echo what Mike said, thank all the community members that were involved in this process, all the nights, the hours that were spent researching, looking at the facilities, touring the facilities. It was a very engaged group of citizens that did miss a lot of meetings. I mean, we had a pretty strong attendance at every single one, so I applaud the community for their investment of their time and the recommendation to move the facility to Pearson. And the other thing is, and I know I've talked a little bit to Mike about this, the name will stay Pearson. And the other thing is, in regards to, once we've made this decision, once we vote on this, what will be the process to start looking at ways to use Central in the future? So those are my questions before you.
Yeah, well, we certainly have a naming policy process, and didn't want to, you know, get the cart before the horse, so to speak, but we want to certainly have that conversation and engage in that conversation. That was beyond the scope of that Community Facilities Task Force. Although the issue was raised in different ways about, you know, different things, and even, you know, I think, you know, we've got playing fields at Southside, I think we might have come up there too, where we, you know, need to take a look at that kind of naming convention, so certainly we'll do that. What was the other question?
What are we going to do with Central?
Oh, Central, yeah.
So once we make the decision to move tonight.
Yep.
Then are we, what is the plan to try to look for ways of Central?
Yeah, great, I'm sorry to remember that. I think, again, it's, we want to take a look at what does it take to have a thoughtful, good process in that and start to look at, again, a variety of options. And, you know, we've done a bit of preliminary planning on that, anticipating that, you know, the board may make a favorable decision of moving, you know, the programming to Pearson, but then that work begins in earnest, and again, and I, you know, and we haven't decided how, even to present a proposal to the board, how we'll engage the community, but we certainly need to engage the community in that process, and at what point, and what are those options? And certainly, we'll start to frame that up and do that. But again, I think we're looking at a, you know, a thoughtful process that will take some time to do as well. I think the short-term probably recommendation would be to put it into, and I wish, you know, our head of operations, Ed, was here, Danny might be able to help me, but there's kind of different levels of putting stuff out of service. And I know what we did at Pearson, we put it into, there's kind of a, you know, you can put it into a really deep lockdown where you don't plan, you know, where it takes a lot to kind of restart and re-energize. And at Pearson, you know, they did things with the plumbing and the water system with, you know, but they were able to be brought back online, you know, relatively easily. There's some work in that, and I think we would put it in that similar, or whatever you want to call it, kind of, yeah, I don't know, I don't want to make up names here, but, you know, kind of partial, you know, freeze or partial lockdown or partial out of order, so we could study it, you know, and figure out what that way forward is, because there's, you know, there's levels of expense in that, and it takes more to put it into that deep freeze, if you will, and do all those things. and take things offline. And then how do you maintain it and do that? And it takes more to bring it back out on the other end. So I think for the first year of that twenty twenty-one school year, it'd be in that medium freeze or whatever. Again, no, nobody's quoting me like in a newspaper on a video or something, but thanks.
So it'll be on YouTube.
Yeah.
Any further?
Yeah, we're going into medium freeze with that, yeah. I hope that made sense. Yeah, Dave, what, are you in pain now to get that?
I'm helping you remember exactly what you said.
Thanks, much appreciated.
Are there any other comments or discussion in regards to this topic? You know, we've kind of discussed it.
Now, are we going to create another Community Facilities Task Force to figure out what to do with Central? Or what's that going to look like?
Well, I think we'll dig in and start to do the planning and start to, you know, start throwing options on the table. And then it's, you know, how do you best explore all those options? And some of the information we gathered in the previous task force will be informative of this one. But then where do you need to go? And what does that look like? And what, what kind of needs to be done internally with the help of, you know, folks like architects and kind of engineers and looking, you know, going back through. We've got a long-term maintenance study that's already done. Revisiting that, looking at some of, you know, potential financial obligations for maintenance. And then kind of going, hey, we can go down paths to further vet this a number of ways. That would be one option. At this point, I'm not ready to say that that would be the suggested option or the option that best fits kind of our needs. We've got to get a little further into that. And then it's, you know, then we'll figure that out. But absolutely, you know, when we're making decisions, we want to share information. We want to have community input and feedback, and we'll do that, so.
I've been advocating to get CFC out of CFC for over seven and a half plus years. So I'll be happy to make a motion to move it from Central Family Center to Pearson.
No, statute.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this topic? Because I know everyone loves talking about it.
Should we make Julie sweat a little bit?
Really get second thoughts.
About time. It's, it's a great move. It's going to benefit the community wonderfully.
And the community is very supportive of this. I've not had one negative piece of feedback. It's all been very positive, so.
It's good for kids.
Yep.
Oh, it's great for the community.
And so in the.
And our customer base, right? Better.
In the interest of listening to the community, that's what we're here for. And it's been all positive. And I would not have any doubt about moving it. I mean, it's the right thing to do for the kids. It's the right thing to do for the staff. And it's the right thing for the community, so. I think we'll talk a little bit longer. I want to see how long we can speak here today.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Now, if you can start with the moving plans, no.
He's already got to go.
Thank you, Julie and staff, for everything that you provided us during this process. It was very helpful in your insights and it helped a long way to making the decision. Because you're, you're the feet on the street. You're the people that are in the building. And your feedback and thoughts were very appreciated, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. That's a big smile on your face.
I was supposed to say something.
Yes, it is.
Sorry, you guys know what you know about it.
It's a little surreal.
Yeah.
You've been waiting a while.
Yes. All right. Just figure out the basketball thing, we're good.
I thought that was your job.
We're going to name it the Tucker Basketball.
I would love that.
All right, we're going to move to five five, which is the Metro ECSU class size study. The data, Dave is going to present some data.
Can we just take it?
Sure. On this.
Can I see? I have six minutes.
Actually, it's down to three because I talked too long.
So I will, I will try to stick to that.
The three or the six?
I'll, I'll put myself on the timer here too. Metro ECU is an educational service unit that does provide services to districts in a variety of areas, training, central purchasing, cohort groups. They put on conferences. They do lots of things to support school districts. One of them is this class size study. What they do is they give their member districts these templates and ask them to complete them. They're actually kind of complicated sheets. And it's a pretty prescriptive process. But how people pull in their capacity to do so can vary. So you have to, it's, the data's all part of a bigger picture of what you look at, in other words. You've got thirty-three different entities completing a fairly complex process. And it's optional participation. Not everybody participates. These are the districts that participated this time.
Dave, can I ask, what does ECSU stand for?
It's Metro, Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Service Unit. I think Mike's looking at me like.
I'm going, that sounds good.
Yeah, and I just looked it up a second ago. So let's go with that for now.
Okay.
So you'll see a lot of these are neighboring districts and other districts around the metro. Okay?
I'm sorry, you said it was optional for districts, but is, is there some kind of engagement just to encourage participations? Thirty-three seems like a, you know.
Not really. Other than you get the data that everybody else has, that would be the incentive. You kind of see where you fit within that. But if you do, if you participate, you participate. If you don't, you don't. We haven't participated every year. We've participated most years. We missed out on eighteen, nineteen, but prior to that, we had participated quite a few years. Okay? So what you get is about a forty, I think that might be linked in here, right? Full report?
I can.
Okay. So what you get is the data sliced up lots of different ways. I'm going to show you in a way that I thought made sense. So what I did for those thirty-three is took their average elementary. They actually provided it. And I pulled it right out of the report. The average for Shakka PK five was twenty-three, fourteen. So we're point four four students below that thirty-three district group. Same analysis for middle level, twenty-eight, fifty-two versus twenty-nine, fifty-eight. We were one point oh six above. And then at the high school, you can see we're one point six seven above. And K twelve, about one student above. Okay?
So that difference, is that pretty typical? Is it?
I would say when I looked at this in the past, and I looked at it probably through either the data and testing or the principal lens, we, I think we were a little more competitive than that. We were probably on the lower side. We might have trended up a bit. And that would align with what we've done at some point when we talk about the budget adjustments that were made since twenty sixteen, seventeen. That slight bump in class sizes is reflected in what you see here. Okay? I can get a little more detail by grade level at the elementary. So I set this up exactly the same. So you can see at kindergarten, I'll just do a couple of them, and then I'll let you think here. For those thirty-three districts, it was twenty point nine one. We were at twenty point one five. Point seven six difference. And then what I did is, in February, we were at twenty point three across all our sections. Our target that you saw Bill pop up earlier is twenty. So you can see, like I talked about staffing at what our enrollment is. This shows we, we did that. It's close, right? We're slightly below our staffing target, slightly above, slightly above, a little below, and quite a bit below. About two students at fifth grade. And I'm going to explain how something like that can happen in fifth grade because that one's kind of interesting, okay? When you put all those numbers together, it gives you that twenty-three, fourteen up above, twenty-three point one four, and shows us point four four below, okay? I'm going to pop up some secondary numbers by department. You can get it as well. And I'll just, this reads exactly the same way. So I'll let you look at that for a second, and I'll let you comment.
Real quick, Dave, so in the near future, with all these classes graduating, we're actually going to see that number go down?
The way we'll do it, Paul, though, is we will match the amount of staff we have to the number of students. So it, when, I would never, I would not classify that as a cut. I'd call it matching how much staff you have to how many kids you have in those sections.
Okay.
You'll have less people because you have less kids. And then, oh, that was middle school? This is high school, sorry. I should have clarified that. Same exact analysis. So you can see at the middle level, we're running a little above. And at the high school level, it's kind of up and down a little bit by department. But on a whole, fairly close to what you see as the averages, not wildly different. And I've heard it said too, when you use averages, there is a danger. Your feet could be in a freezer and your head could be in the oven, but your average temperature would be pretty good. So there is a range that's within there. But when you roll it all up like we're doing, you see that we're pretty close to the average. Okay? Here's, when I talk, this goes right to what Paul was just saying. How, how do we do this? And this, I used fifth grade as an example. And these are numbers I made up, but could very well be reality somewhere. So say your target, like ours is, is twenty-seven, okay? And say you had ninety-three students and that was four classes. You're saying, I think that should be four fifth grade classrooms. So the math is, that's twenty-three and a quarter kids per class. You are three point seven five below the target. Now, you could make a decision and say, you know what? Maybe we should see what this looks like with three sections. Okay? And then you'll see that would put you at thirty-one students per class, and it's four above. So that one section, depending on how many kids you have, can swing it quite a bit. And so you're always making decisions like this. And we have some parameters that we use to make those decisions. The bigger a school, the more sections you have, the tighter you can be toward those targets. The smaller you are, the harder it is. One section swings you a lot one way or another. It's easy to think about this. And in one elementary section, high school, middle school, where they're not in the same class, they're switching a lot. You have departments. It gets much trickier. But the same concept holds. It's about ratios and trying to match the targets that we're going after. Okay? That's all I had. And that was not quite six minutes, but sorry, I think three, so. Questions on that?
So that was, I assume, Mike, we're using that as a great example. That differs by building as well.
Absolutely.
So taking into consider boundaries and those things. I guess my question is, is there a, what's the acceptable margin of error? You know, like, it looks like, you know, four, but you would never want it to be ten, right?
Right.
So is there, is there a standard or an acceptable parameter?
We have tried to work around the plus three number. But it's a, could be, it depends when it happens as well, when you want to do it. If kids are moving out or kids are moving in. That challenges it, when it, when it is. Because it might be plus three and a fraction right now, but we might have a pattern of seeing some attrition. So that three number is what we're looking at. There's times where you might say four. There's in the past where we did it, which made you closer to the target. Was I closer to the target at this one or this one? In tight times, you might make a different decision. You might say, I'm going to go to a plus three and a half. I'm going to go to a plus four. And make your decisions then. But you're right. It's not ten, right? It's not probably, but, but what is it? And it's something that we, we have to keep our eye on. And that's one way that we can, again, depending on our situation, use that to help us make decisions on when we add and when we pull tight.
And I just said, good carryover from, we had a very short discussion on some of this at Personnel. So you're adding a lot of illustration. And then the model being used is very well done. And even, you know, you heard Dave answer a question about, well, last week it was this. It's monitored throughout the year and compared to previous years. At every grade level, every building, you know, and so it's, again, it's, it's a lot of work, but it's important work. And so I think a lot of times, you know, until you become a school administrator, you don't understand that real strong connection between enrollment and revenue and then enrollment and costs. And you have to, and you have to do a great job monitoring and making good decisions. And there's different models of doing that, you know, and even nuances within a model. And so I'm very, very impressed, you know, with the model that we use. It does a very good job. It's, it's complex in the sense it can, it can, it can ferret through a lot of data. But it's also, I think, most people can kind of get the hang and understand what it's doing in a relatively short period of time, so. And if you, you know, as a board member, if you ever had an interest in, you know, looking at something like that, you know, we'd be happy to show you too.
I would just add that it's reassuring that we're on par, you know, with that hope of the, you know, out of the sample thirty-three. Certainly seems like, you know, where are we expecting to be?
So if, there's some at the top that are very low. There's some that are very high.
I'm sure.
And then there's kind of this middle range where they're all really close. Half a kid can move you quite a bit around in the.
Well, is the volatility at the, you know, K and twelve? Or is the, is the volatility in the middle, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Moving on to five point six. Keith will come up and talk to us about the staffing timeline for twenty twenty-one school year.
So you have a lot of foundation for this. So I'll, I'll try to go through it quickly, but let's go to the next slide here. You know, this sort of, we talked about what are some of our timelines. In this, in January, we spent a lot of time sort of talking about what our numbers were. And the key number up there is enrollment numbers. Like Dave said, we're trying to match the number of staff we have with the number of students. And then we have acceptable ratios that we're using plus or minus three. I mean, you, earlier you asked like enrollment. Dave actually did this on one of the sheets that we were working with. And it sort of shows you trend. So in terms of our elementary over the last three years, you can see our trend is we're, we've got fewer students. And our high schools peaked a little bit there. At the top, sort of what we were talking about before. So that is, you know, the number of students we have, that's, determines everything. That determines how much funding we get. And so when we're thinking about how much staff do we use, it's really related to that because that's where we're getting our funds to be able to do that. Then as we move, you know, move into, as we've been through February, we've been really spending a fair amount of time finding out are people coming back from leave of absences? We're giving principals, hey, are you, are there people that you're non-renewing? Because that gives us a vacancy to work with. Then as we're kind of, at the end of February, like I say, we're telling principals, hey, we need to know you're non-renewed by March eighteenth. And then we're going to start to share our initial allocations with staff or with the principals, and they're going to fill in their staffing rosters. And we have a whole series of spreadsheets that we put together to try to help with that process. The staffing allocation model, so I wasn't going to go through this, but I wanted to show you how, what it looks like. And when, back when we were really dealing, a couple of years back or a couple, a couple of cycles back, when we were dealing with some of our, not only our staffing, but what about our budget? Dave and I and some other staff, we kind of sat together and tried to talk about how, what kind of model we put together that would tell us, be able to have us fluctuate our FTE based on the number of students we have. And also help us in the event that we had to make some level of cuts because it would, we would change that plus or minus. Like, prior to me getting here, I think it was plus two. Wasn't it, Dave? Plus two? Plus or minus two, I think. It was moved to plus or minus three at that particular year to try to save some, you know, have fewer staff. But anyway, this model, you can, you can see at the top there, we're actually meeting and reviewing our enrollment numbers. That's why Dave had the enrollment number right off the top of his head because almost a weekly to every other week process that we're kind of reviewing these numbers and where are we? And, and kind of came upon this idea of trying to keep a history of this so that we can go back. We're starting to create. We're starting to create this historical record of how do, how do we get kids during the year? And how many leave and stay and all those kinds of things? So we're starting to develop some data. I'll just thumb through that, that's the elementary. The middle school one's very similar. Same kind of thing, though, how many children are in each of those grade levels? And how many staff do they need? And that's kind of also under all this is, you know, how many classes can a student take? And how many teachers do we need for that? And high school almost is a mirror of this, it's just another part of our spreadsheet. So it just kind of gives you a sense of, a broad sense of the sophistication of it. It's, it's pretty good. I mean, we were really able to kind of figure out where, and fairly, I think, our principals have responded, I think, fairly positively to it. From, they understand why they're getting the staff they're getting. There's not a lot of confusion here. Then in February, you know, the end of February, you all know that we were trying to balance the big project of balance the middle school's enrollment. And so we've had some meetings there about discussing how, how many classes and how many students are each of the buildings gonna have. And we've got that firmed up, Dave, and his project there, they've got that firmed up now. The middle schools know how many students are gonna have, so we are able to do that. And we knew that was gonna affect high school, because we sometimes share staff between those. Then in March, you're coming up, where that's that deadline, you're talking about retiring teachers. Going on to the next one?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, it's all right. And so that's when we're getting retiring teachers and teachers who are returning. We're already, you know, we've already gotten all that information in and shared that with principals so they know who's coming back. We've been encouraging principals, if they know anybody who's talking about retiring, to let us know. Because it, it could actually, in some of the buildings where they have lower enrollment, it might allow somebody to stay at that building. And so we're just working through the process now, we're having meetings with our principals. The staffing specialists and shared staff, that's kind of a more difficult thing, because most of those staff are shared in multiple buildings. So how do you, you know, how do you share staff with all the different schedules and things that are going on? Then coming, you know, we're moving on to the end here. We've got special services has their allocation of staff. We're also asking principals about non-renewals. This is when we really need to know that. And I think just go to the next slide. And then unrequested leave, some of you may not be familiar with that. Teachers who are tenured in the state of Minnesota, if we don't have positions for them, we put them on unrequested leave, which allows them to be able to, if we have any openings, we have to go to them first and say, hey, here's an opening. Is this something you'd like to do that? And it's, you know, over a pretty lengthy time, they have that ability to come back to a school district. Even if they take a job with another district, they can still come back. And like I said, the week of April 13th, we're gonna be giving staff their assignment letters so they know specifically where they are. And then, of course, again, any resignations and those sorts of things. And then during the summer, we're just monitoring enrollments. We're also then doing paraprofessionals in terms of how many we need for next year. That's pretty much staffing. Any questions?
Yeah, Keith, let me go back to that one. It's like, the unrequested leave stats, are we still paying salaries and benefits?
Yeah, they just, it's really, it's a right to come back.
Okay.
It's probably as close to layoff as you might have in that field.
And they can come back in an area that they have a license.
A license, yeah, they can't come back to just anything, they have to have a license. So what we would have to do to put somebody on unrequested leave is exhaust every potential option of license that they have. We just have nothing. I mean, there's, we can't have probationary teachers available and still have people on unrequested leave.
Any other questions? Thank you, Keith. 5.7. Consideration to approve the second reading of school district policies 409 and 523. Tim?
Yes, we had looked at these in detail in our last meeting. And I should have said, certainly Sarah and Redmond put in considerable effort to keep policies current and aligned with the Minnesota School Board. You know, this is, these are some of the things that don't often get the accolades, but I think it's important to have this updated and consistent as a point of reference. So what we talked about relative to the tobacco-free environment, there was an update. And like you had called out, there was a review done, I won't say back to the November timeframe, but then additional language was presented. And so the piece that we're simply calling out is down here under, is it the section? Do we have it highlighted here?
I'll go back to the meeting.
Yeah, it's, essentially it's talking about what tobacco isn't. And it refers to tobacco cessation products such as gum or a patch. Those are actually excluded, so the way that policy reads that those are exceptions. Highlight, I think, I thought it was in section three, A. So basically calling out that those types of tobacco cessation products are not considered tobacco use and would otherwise be permitted. Any other question? Do we want to look at both of these, or do we want to?
Yeah, because I think we can, we'll approve both of them.
And then the second having to do with language on unpaid meal charges. We updated the language in section D there, instead of may, we had the verb will provide lunch. And then this section was added by the Minnesota School Board policy. We simply added the same privilege. I thought it will not be taken away from the student's overdrawn account. And so those two are consistent. Questions?
Questions?
It's pretty straightforward.
Motion to.
Motion.
Okay. I'll say it. Second, any further discussion? All those in the bag would say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Moving on to 5.8. The consideration to approve the Shakopee High School boys soccer program travel for August of 2020.
Yeah, this, this is a pretty typical request, and, but we wanted, we're doing a work session to give them a little more time to do planning and preparation. If we did it at a regular meeting, it very likely would have been part of the consent agenda. There's really, you know, these are trips that our athletic teams take pretty routinely. But because it's the first time the boys soccer team has done this, it's called out a policy to get, you know, more approval. Again, it's, it's recommended for approval by the athletic director, the high school principal, the school superintendent, and.
I think the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second by Joe. Further discussion? All those in the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item six, which is other. 6.1 is the Supreme Court visit, this is very exciting, to the Shakopee High School on May 13th.
Yeah, and what I've done, this is kind of the planning packet, and I'm not gonna go through this, but if you would scroll, there's a schedule of events, it's five, six pages in. The planning is, you know, it's part of the first part of that, they're continuing today. And again, and we wanna, this is just an amazing event. The Supreme Court, you know, in Minnesota, the Minnesota Supreme Court goes to school districts and visits schools twice a year. And they actually hold its real court. It is the Minnesota Supreme Court, holding a session of the Minnesota Supreme Court in our high school auditorium on May 13th, which I think is just an awesome, awesome opportunity. It's a great learning event. And there is, and this is a 10-day schedule of events, but it's a full day. And even, I was really impressed, we had one of the Supreme Court justices come to the first planning meeting, and they love doing it, and it's, you know, we've got kids that are, you know, engaged in learning in these areas. And so our staff at the high school is putting together, you know, working with the staff from the Supreme Court, put together a really great day of learning and activities that kind of surround, like I said, an actual session of the Supreme Court, which it's just a great opportunity for lots of our students. There is an opportunity, and we're working on, you'll notice the second thing on the list is meet and greet with school VIPs. We, this is something that we're gonna flesh out, but we want to work on, how do we invite a lot of our community partners and other folks who play a role in, you know, into our school, be part of this meet and greet? And just kind of, you know, share in this experience with us? If, if for nothing else, and kind of a light breakfast and a chance to kind of mingle and get a sense for what the day's events. But certainly we'll be working on kind of an invitation plan for, again, a lot of our community partners. We've got all kinds of folks that we partner with and do things. And very often, you know, it's, how do they help us? How do they help our students? This is an opportunity for, hey, we'd like you to come and join something that we think is really pretty special and pretty neat. And we'd like you to be part of that, so we're working on that. And they're going through, you know, we're reaching, you know, trying to figure out other representatives from the community to do things like presentation of the colors. It is a very formal setting, and there's a lot of kind of learning there of what's acceptable behavior and what isn't. You know, cell phones are off, they're not permitted. Our auditorium becomes the Supreme Court's courtroom. And so it'd just be a fantastic learning opportunity. Again, I just wanted to kind of point some of these things out. And we do not know at this point what the, what the case will be. Certainly, I'm looking forward to the experience and being, you know, and being there for that day. But for board members and other folks in our community, I would say, you know, we'll, we'll figure out how to get the invitations out and some of those pieces. And there's parts that are gonna be kind of community oriented, but the, the primary program is about students and student learning. And so. You know what I mean?
Fantastic.
Pretty jazzed up about it, I think it's gonna be really, really cool, so.
And how much communication has happened with teachers and students in particular in this company? In other words, is it gonna be received with the same level of reverence that one would expect from the student body?
Yeah. They've done this, we're the 51st school to do this. They're good at doing it. I know that our, our staff and our students, we're gonna be the best of all the 51, I know that.
Certainly.
But yeah, our, our staff, they're excited about this learning opportunity. And again, I, you know, I think students respond to different learning opportunities. And when you, and that's part of, you know, even how you learn, where you go. The, the interaction we have with community partners, both inside and outside of school, part of that learning is, you know, what, what is the appropriate decorum in this particular space at this particular time for this particular activity? And our kids typically just, they do a great job. And yeah, they're, they said, they're digging into the planning, it's, you know, the high school staff, the teachers. You know, I'm sure students are very excited and, you know, and it's kind of neat. You know, we built an academy with a, with a courtroom as part of it. And now, you know, now we're actually going, you know, we're gonna host the Supreme Court in another space in the high school and have an actual session of that. So we've been doing some mock things and doing other stuff as part of that academy. And so this just builds on that learning. I would think that any student going into law would just absolutely love that.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I ask only so far as, I don't, I don't know what the decorum is and that kind of, you know, venue, so.
It's very strict.
As well it should be. Yeah, what an incredible learning opportunity, yeah.
All right. There's one item that's not on the agenda that Mike and I talked a little bit about before the meeting tonight. I asked Mike to give an update on the coronavirus, COVID-19 or whatever, however we wanna label it, and the information that came out late this afternoon in regards to how it's affecting our district.
You know, part of the, part of the joy of the job of superintendent or school leader is you never, never quite sure where the journey will take you and the things you will learn, sort of, it sounded a little Dr. Seuss-like, I guess. But I know more about COVID-19 and coronavirus than I ever thought I would learn. I know more about the World Health Organization, the CDC, you know, the University of Minnesota Institute for Infectious Disease and other places. And we have been working, we've got a team that's been doing preparation and planning, you know, over a couple, few weeks now. We are following a process, you know, we're having discussions about a variety of things. This is a unique situation, it's, it's got a social dynamic to it, certainly, that people, it's new, it's different. I think anytime people, where there's something kind of unknown, brings maybe a heightened level of kind of anxiety and fear. You know, we're working on how do we process through that? Even at the classroom level, I think we've got teachers that have worked with students and, you know, kind of what, what is, you know, kind of separate fact from fiction, kind of also help to sort of understand probability, understand different outcomes, understand what we're dealing with. We have sent out public notices, or we sent out what we call letter number one about a week ago, or the end of last week, kind of outlining, you know, the things we're doing, the planning, preparation, reiterating that a lot of, you know, the reduced transmission of, you know, viruses of all kinds. And this is falling right during, you know, cold and flu season. You know, it's the, you know, it's to cover your mouth when you cough, it's wash your hands off and stay home if you're not feeling well. And then we're also looking at, you know, there's some other dimensions, and we've seen things across the country and, and to be honest, across the world, where people are trying to figure out, you know, what this is, how it's transmitted, how it spreads, what's the rate of that. And we've seen different public events in the United States canceled recently, so we're certainly watching those things. We're having conversations, you know, I think one of the advantages we have is our cold days, our online, you know, our online learning days. So we have the ability to do distance learning, if you will, and to continue and extend learning remotely. And we're not, you know, ready to do anything like that, but we're continuing to plan and prepare so that hopefully, you know, if we need to, we can make very good decisions, you know, shouldn't if a situation result where we, we need to do something like online learning for a period of time. But, you know, and then we, you know, so that's kind of the general overview. Today, you know, we're seeing, you know, these, the different reports and things like that. And today we did have a report of a parent. We sent out, you know, we sent something to all the parents and guardians and staff in our school district, that we did have somebody who, you know, self-reported, called in, said, hey, and worked with the Minnesota Department of Health, who had been exposed to somebody who has been verified, this was in a different state at a work meeting, but verified that they did have COVID-19 or coronavirus. We worked, our head nurse, Peggy Nerdal, and others, just worked very closely today with the Minnesota Department of Health, as did the person who, you know, had this contact, well, what do we do in this situation? And so Minnesota Department of Health, you know, directed this person to a 14-day self-quarantine. And then from our standpoint, we said, well, what about the children? And we followed the Department of Health guideline that said, if, you know, as long as the, the parent is asymptomatic and not, does not have a fever, the kid should go to school. If she should spike a fever, then the kid should stay home. And we're using that guidance and working collaboratively with that parent. Also trying to communicate early and on the front end of this. And, you know, trying to be, my belief would be that if, if we can give good information that comes from credible sources based on fact, that that helps, you know, I would rather know, and I think that, that lessens the anxiety, and so.
So just to be, for people watching at home, just to be clear, there is not a case confirmed in our district.
Correct.
This is just being done as a precaution as a result of a parent who has come into close proximity, somebody that has been diagnosed with the virus.
Correct. And the person may never develop.
Right.
The infection.
We're still under one, two, three cases in the state.
Two.
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 Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate everything that you've done, and you've been working with Peggy and, and principals and Ashley on making sure that our day communication plan and what we're gonna do in the event, that there may be an actual case, and how we handle it. I know you've been working hard in meeting with that group as well, so.
And as always, we're gonna find that balance. We want to keep kids safe, we have an obligation to, you know, to student learning. And there's certainly a lot of factors in any situation, and there definitely is in this, too, so. But we've got a good team, and we've had, I think we've done very good work in terms of preparing and planning. of preparing and planning and.
Okay. Any questions on that before we move on to?
Kind of sounds like the same common sense stuff that they've been, that every government agency's been sending forth, so.
All right, so we will go around, anything that you would have? Joe, we'll start with you to.
Last Monday, went to the district five day council meeting. Ray went over a lot of the stuff that we talked about there. Tuesday night, had the CPAC, the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee and Bill went over kind of just explaining to the five members that were there, what we hope to get out of them, what kind of feedback and, and they're a great group of accountants, a member of a bank and a business owner here. And we'll, we'll work with them over the next several months to keep them updated and get ideas from outside of here. It's always good to get outside opinions. I think that was the only two main meetings I went to last week.
Dave?
Few things, just to reiterate, we are working with our health professionals in the district, but also not with the principals today as well, starting to generate a checklist of actions that they can take in their building and start to think about. I'm going to a Safe and Supportive Schools conference tomorrow and I know the governor is going to be there and I think the commissioner of that is going to be there as well. That wasn't the original topic of this conference, but I'm sure it's going to be part of it now, so hopefully we'll be able to learn something from that as well. The middle school busing, just a quick update on that, I probably should have put this in the rap, but the rap just got away from me, so you get to hear it here. The plan is very simple. If you are a kid who lives in the west boundaries and you're riding a bus to west, you just stay on it and, sorry, you're in the west boundaries and you wanted to continue at east, you just stay on the bus, that'll be the last stop. At the end of the day, what will happen is you'll be waiting at east until the buses leave west, the first stop will be at east. So those buses will kind of cross and that will be the, the plan initially. If the timing of that doesn't work out for some reason, then we'll adjust. But just to reiterate, because I know viewership is high here, that this is only a one-year plan for the busing, so down west, just this school year.
And Dave, I would say, you know, originally we talked a lot about shuttles, this is a far better plan, it's superior to a shuttle system. So great work all the way around.
Yep, and that was our Palmer and our Jerry Anderson helped with that as well.
Well, it's even a little bit of the under promise and over deliver, so thank you.
And I was wondering if, well, if it would be worthwhile to have electric service come one day? I don't know why I thought of it, there was some topic was here to talk about summer school and summer programming, I think that would be maybe a good future topic. And that is it.
Bob?
Right.
Bill, anything else you want to share with us this evening?
That's it.
Sarah?
No.
Ashley?
No, I was just going to mention briefly, sorry Dave, that we are also having weekly conference calls with the Minnesota Department of Health.
Okay. Tim?
We've already covered the policy updates and now we've got a facility meeting coming up.
I just want to say kudos to winter sports, seems like we're having some real good success, so shout out to them.
Really don't have anything to kind of point to say.
Anything else that you want to?
I've spoken more than my fair share today, I'm good.
I don't think, the only thing I have is community engagement. Thanks to everyone who has signed up so far, I think we have a lot of slots filled, so I'm excited to see what's going to come out of this and being out in the community and in our schools. On Friday, I had the opportunity to stop at Sweeney to their read-a-thon as I was heading out of town to see my dad and that was awesome. I mean, they, the teachers there, they do such a great job with, with events like that, dressing in character for their theme of what their room books were about and one room had like campsite tents set up and they were kids who had their blankets and pillows and they were reading books and a professional football player was in one room and he was reading about football and sports to kids, so, I mean, the kids were engaged and they were excited and so it was, it was fun to see. So glad that I was able to, to make that event, so. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else. We have upcoming meetings, Personnel tonight and then we've got Facility on the 18th and Finance Committee, the Foreign Affairs Board meeting on the 23rd and then April, we've got several meetings as well on what was to come, so I think that's what we have tonight.
Make a motion to, anybody want to make a motion to close this meeting?
Oh, man, good.
Paul?
I'll say it.
Tim? Anything else? You need to vote? Oh, dang it. I want to get this right one of these times. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.